Twenty, Independence Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We are one member short, but we have four. It's a quorum, right? We're not waiting on a fifth. You told me that, that's right. So first, let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Auger.
Present.
Mr. Zurich.
Here.
Mr. Gally.
Here.
Mr. Charles.
Here.
And Mr. Epping is absent.
Let's have a review of the agenda and a motion to accept if so.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as posted.
I'll go ahead and second that. We have a motion in second. All in favor to move forward with the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Anybody in the audience wish to make any public comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll keep moving. Unfinished business is the next item. There is no unfinished business. We have three new cases tonight, and for the petitioners in the audience, what we'll do is call the cases in order. Plus, that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and then give us a brief summary of your project and what you're trying to accomplish. And, you know, then we'll proceed with questions for you. So that being said, we'll call the first case tonight, case number twenty-two dash zero-one-four, Linda Lawyer. The petitioner is requesting a four-point-one-six side yard variance setback from section four-point-oh-six-D, table four-point-oh-six, in order to construct and attach shed to a carport on an existing non-conforming lot of record. Linda?
Sure. I just bought and moved into this new house on Townsend Lake, and I don't have a shed to put my lawnmower or my bicycle or my garden tools. And I'd like to build a shed and attack it. The most convenient thing, the best-looking thing, I think, would be to attach it to the existing carport. And I have a builder that will do it, and we would be keeping the same roof line as the existing carport. If I put a shed, like, down between the house and the lake, it would be, like, obstructing my entire view of the lake. I only have, like, a forty-foot lot. My other option, I guess, would be to put a garage with storage in it between the house and the road. And I suppose I could do that, but it would be a lot more expensive. And I would like to be able to build a shed. Now, the fence on the right-hand side or the south side of my property, it doesn't go straight. It sort of curves over, and that may be a little problem, but I don't think it is a problem because the carport would be extended like this, and then the shed would be sort of tilted to the side. But there's, I'm going to take out part of the deck to do this. I have a nice, beautiful deck, but I need a shed more than I need a big deck. So that's the problem.
Okay, thanks, Linda. So, yeah, and I'm sure you're aware of this now that you've gone through this process. I believe your house was in front of us for a variance for the carport a few years back.
Right.
And I was a member of the board then and saw that case. You mentioned a couple of things, the, you know, not putting the shed in the backyard, you know, you may be blocking a neighbor's view as well. The putting it in your front yard, I don't think there's any room in your front yard either with, yeah, I mean, you're pretty close. The street isn't your actual property line. Your property line's a lot closer to the front of your house than it is.
I have been driving around to some of the lake properties, and I see that a lot of people do put a garage right in front of the house, between the house and the road, because of the same predicament that I'm in.
Yeah, and they may have a larger lot or a different scenario, or it may have been before permitting and ZBA's and such, but...
But I'm just wondering why, okay, why can't we just extend the carport another ten feet? Or is the problem because I want to attach the shed to the carport? I mean, what if I went out a foot and started the shed there? I mean, which wouldn't make sense to me, but...
Yeah, and so I'm going to ask our planner a couple of questions that kind of related to that, because those were kind of some of my questions. So the variance was granted by the ZBA for the carport in past meetings, correct?
Correct.
So that variance doesn't keep carrying down to additional structures? It requires a separate variance?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, even, you can't, and not to mention the fact that you can't extend the line, that increases the nonconformity. So any kind of enlargement of this carport requires a separate variance.
Okay.
Yeah, so what the variance was for for the previous homeowner was the carport that you see on the drawing.
Yeah, and I obviously remember that case. I think she was here a couple of times.
It was two thousand eighteen-ish.
Yeah. Okay, I'll bring it to the board for questions or comments. Does somebody want to start?
I will. How can I pull up the site plan on the...
It should be on there.
I'm getting the two...
It's to the right of that.
Let me...
Did you want to start, Mr. Charles, while he's searching his computer?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Grab the hand?
I see the variance is for four-point-one-six feet. But the chart that you gave us says ten feet, so if this is a nonconforming lot of record, that means it's five?
It's ten and five on the side yard setbacks for a nonconforming lot of record.
Okay. I'm looking at that sketch that's on the right. And it shows zero-point-eight-four. Is there any way you can make that bigger?
Yeah, that...
The one on the right.
I noticed this for the exact variance that was for the carport because she had stated that she's extending it.
Right.
Extending it, but sort of cocking it to...
Yeah, you can't extend it straight because you'd probably be over the lot line.
Yeah, she's, you know, I mean, just...
It would just have to be cocked a little bit now, and I do have a builder that is custom building the shed. He will custom build the shed.
Has that lot line been verified by survey?
I believe it was as part of the previous application that had to be done.
So the point-eight-four is actually what, from the property line to the...
Yes.
Corner of the carport?
Yes.
And the carport is, what, ten feet?
Point-eight-four feet. I remember in the previous case that they made them reduce or shrink the carport so rainwater wouldn't wash right on the next door neighbor.
Yeah, I noticed looking at it, I mean, I looked at it from the road, and it appeared as though your deck wraps around the house all the way up to the end of the carport. And you say you're going to take off part of that deck?
Yeah.
So this drawing that we have here is actually incorrect in terms of where the existing deck is. It's not, it actually is farther to the west.
Well, the existing deck is just like it shows, that corner right here. Oh, no, it's a little different on mine. It's definitely different on mine.
Yeah, because she's holding, it looks like a silverback in her hand. But it's obvious that part of the deck's going to be removed.
So that's a deck there too, coming out of the side door?
Yeah, it's concrete, yeah. That's what I noticed looking at this, that there was, appeared to be something behind the carport.
Concrete, yeah.
Okay.
Right, while they're going over that, has this been reviewed at all by the building department for fire? Don't they have, when you're this close to the property line, doesn't this have to have a fire-rated wall?
I believe it's distance to structures. That'll get covered by the building department when they, when she submits if it gets approved. So we'll have it vetted by a fire department and/or the building official.
Mrs. Law, do you hear that, that it'll go through the fire? Okay. Okay, you're not surprised?
We're going to have the building official...
No, it makes sense.
Okay.
I typically look at sheds because it's just a residential land use permit, but I also do zoning compliance anyway on all permits. But I will, I'll have the building official and maybe make that part of the motion. Have the building official, you know, make sure that there's no fire-rated issues.
Because we've had that before on previous cases where they wanted to come closer than two feet, I think it was. I can't remember offhand what's in the concrete.
Yeah, I remember this was, that was an issue with the previous case, and the fact that it was not directly next to the existing house, I think, made that...
I could be wrong, but I think it's ten feet between structures because the house I built in Union Lake, we had a five-foot setback. But the neighbor's house was four feet to the property line, so they made us go six. Since they were existing, we had to push it to six. We couldn't get that extra foot, or it had to be fire-rated.
Does the drawing that you have show your neighbor's house?
Yes.
Oh, could we see that? That's what I...
Right here. It's far from where the shed would be. In fact, it's right by the carport.
Farther up front.
Yeah, farther up front.
Because the shed is actually going to start roughly where the end of that concrete is.
Yeah.
You're going to actually attach the shed to the carport structure?
That's what I would like to do. I don't have to, but it would, I think, help the wind in the winter time, you know, because the wind comes off the lake, and if I had that structure there, the snow wouldn't get in there so much.
That's what I was worried about, if somebody, you know, a fireman wants to get around or...
Do we have this as part of our record?
Yeah, we have that also.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Yeah, I'll, did you have any additional comments to add?
My builder was going to come today, but he has COVID.
That's okay.
I have a similar problem as what Ken has. The proximity of the house next door is almost sitting right on the carport on her survey. There's very limited space between the two, and I don't know, maybe we approved the carport some time ago. I remember slightly the case, but when it got to the building department, I don't know how the carport got built without more spacing, but be that what it may, her survey shows that house right next to the carport.
Yeah, I'll, anybody in the audience have comments on this case? Somebody present? Were there any neighbor comments issued to that?
How is your relationship with your neighbors?
Well, I'm new there.
You're the newbie.
I'm the newbie, but the lady right next door, that is right next to the carport, she has no problem with what I want to do.
You do know that most of these septic's are in the rear yard on these houses, because they're not on sewer. Your house is not on a sewer.
Yes, it is.
Is it not a sewer?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Pretty close to the main road.
Okay.
No sewer, no well.
That's all my questions.
Any additional comments from anybody? Yeah, it's, I think, kind of like Mr. Ottman said, if we condition that we vet it for fire and building compliance, and obviously survey the footing to make sure, because obviously that line is on an angle, and the carport's on an angle to make sure we don't encroach on the approved setback. I think the, you know, the shed obviously helps you store your outdoor equipment and materials, so it's, you know, cleaning up your yard and making it a nicer...
Well, actually, my bicycle is in the house.
Yeah.
My lawnmower is in a little doghouse. It's not even on here. It's, and I have to fold, I have to fold the handle up to get it in, the doghouse. The doghouse isn't on this lot here. But also, the builder that I have is an expert in drainage, water drainage, and that was a concern of mine because there's a little slope to the land, and I certainly don't want water in the shed.
So you intend on having the print say Moskovic on there? You intend on having him complete it for you? Moskovic, or you have a different builder?
No, no, no. His name is Brian, Brad Scott.
Okay, so that's, he did the carport addition, that's why that...
And he did, I'll tell you, the carport is only, what, three or four years old?
Actually, he didn't do it. It was a different builder.
It is ruined, but water, water's coming down, and this Brad Scott is going to fix that for me, too.
Okay.
It's actually a different builder than Moskovic.
Okay.
Yeah, all the shingles and what have to be replaced. That loan is going to cost me about thirty-five hundred dollars.
Probably was around two thousand eighteen, because the print's two thousand seventeen, so that was the timeframe, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Any more deliberation?
When would I hear?
We'll deliberate for a minute here and come up with a motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody want to entertain a motion or any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the case of twenty-two dash zero-one-four, requesting a four-point-one-six side yard variance in order to construct and attach shed, I move that we grant the variance subject to the building department and the fire department, looking into fire issues as they may be.
And a survey?
He's requested adding a...
Yeah, and an as-built survey of the footings to make sure that they're eighty-four hundreds off the property line.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Charles, support by Auger. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zurich?
Yes.
Okay, your request has been approved, and you can get with the building department a few days, next week? Mr. Ottman?
Yeah.
And...
Are you saying it's mine?
Your request has been approved.
Your variance has been approved, so the next step is to have your builder complete a residential land use application, submit it to the building department, we'll review it, and then you go from there.
Okay, could you write that down so I can give it to my builder?
If I had a scrap piece of paper, but... He's a licensed builder. He'll know the process, so our process is the same as anybody else.
Okay, well, Mr. Ottman is doing that. We'll go ahead and start case number two tonight, case twenty-two dash zero-one-five, Grant Bahari. Petitioner is requesting two total variances, a three-foot height variance and a six-point-six square foot size variance from section twelve-point-oh-four-B, table twelve-point-oh-four-B-one. And order can start a new ground sign at seven-six-five-zero, Ortonville Road, Zone MS Motor Vehicle Service Station. I'll just name an address and then a brief summary. Thanks.
My name is Grant Bahari. Address is seven-six-five-zero, Ortonville Road, Clarkston, Michigan, four-eight-three-four-eight. Good evening.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I took this store over back in two thousand eight and made significant changes over the years to enhance the corner there. I recently remodeled the store a few years ago, and looking at the sign, the old monument sign that I currently have, it's getting pretty outdated, and it's almost forty years old. The reason for the variance today is a couple of things. First off, more importantly than anything, the safety of the consumers that support me daily gives them a larger sign to be able to read on a very busy, fast M-fifteen road that's fifty-five miles an hour. Also, the sign will clean up the property, which comes to putting banners that are on my windows now that say liquor, beer, and wine. They'll be able to be displayed on the price sign very nice and clean, so the store looks presentable. Also, once again, to enhance Independence Township and Exit Ninety-One, not only the sign will be brand-new, but also it will be landscaped nicely to accommodate the new sign. Doing some due diligence on my closest neighbor resident is five-hundred-and-thirty-two feet behind the gas station, which is very heavily wooded as of right now. The larger digits and slightly taller display will make the sign safer. The taller sign does not create a burden to the residents in the area, as the closest resident will be, like I said, five-hundred-and-thirty-two feet. I don't know if I could ask this question, but was there any residents that had a complaint or on this subject matter, by chance? Okay, just out of curiosity. So, yeah, just want to put a new sign up, and the way Aver Sign, Aver Sign Company, one of the largest guys in the industry, the way they conform everything, this is kind of the size that we came up with that will fit what I got going on there. I brought a few different renderings to Mr. Ottman regarding this issue, and this is one of the, you know, the ones that were more tame. The other ones that I had were a little more rambunctious and larger. But I think this would look nice and be able to display all the things that I carry now in my gas station.
Okay, thanks. Again, I think I asked Mr. Ottman this question earlier. This conforms to the new LED?
It will.
With...
Yeah, I mean, right now, the way it's pictured, it doesn't?
Yeah.
Because it's got colors and it's probably a waving flag, you know, but it will.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the LED panel does conform.
We did have a case on the property just north of you a few years back in a...
Mr. Bayless's office?
Similar situation. I think the reasons given for, I believe his request was granted. I don't know if yours is higher or lower than his would be, was obviously high-speed road, the hill, visibility from people coming off the expressway, and, you know, I think he had some proximity utilities as well.
Yeah, he has a utility box, a big utility box that blocks his view.
That was direct.
Yeah. Well, your store, I've noticed you've done a lot of work to it over the years. It looks great. It's, you clean it up a lot. It's, it looks nice.
More to come, hopefully.
All right, any comments or questions from the board?
Without a site plan, I'm assuming this goes in the exact same spot as the old one is?
Absolutely.
And that it's actually located on the south side of the driveway, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does that meet, does front yard setback?
Yes.
Like I say, without a site plan, I...
Yeah, he, and he also, he has LED numbers right now, so he had previously gotten a variance for that.
That is a picture of his existing sign up in the upper left, right?
Yes.
It is. As you know, before LED, you know, the new ordinance, everybody, every gas station got a variance for changeable sign numbers.
Anything else, Mr. Charles?
No.
So really quick, if you notice my current sign there, I mean, I got some, you know, rock boulders on there, but my idea was to put some limestone, you know, maybe three courses of limestone with some perennials underneath to dress it up. So it'll look a lot more inviting.
Mr. Auger, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm opposed to it. I've been by the site three or four times in the last couple of weeks because I pick up the agenda off the Clarkston News. But we've been trying to get all the signs in the township into conformity. Bowman Chevrolet, Setco Gas down on Dixie Speedway, the one out on Mayby and Sashibaw. Everybody that's come before us, that their signs have been higher, the pole sign right here at the corner is coming down. Trying to, with the, go along with what the planning commission spent so much time on the sign ordinance to get the signs to be relatively the same, so I'm opposed to it. It's very visible. Your sign is very visible from the road. It looks like the sign, the gas pricing, LEDs are all going to be similar in size.
Yes, sir. That's actually, I believe that's a state law now.
There is in our township zoning ordinance, and Mr. Ottman can probably quote it to you somewhere, but signs in your windows can only take up so much visible space. We've had a lot of problems with McDonald's and a lot of the restaurants.
I prefer, I prefer a clean look.
Yeah, actually, the new ordinance, if he's going to do LED, in exchange for LED, there cannot be any window signs, which I've spoken to the petitioner about that, so he's aware of that, as part of our LED requirements.
I don't know. I'd just like to see the sign stay sized in what our planning commission has spent so much time to, and our staff and Dick Carlisle and that, we spent a lot of money trying to get the signs in conformity, so that's all I have to say.
Do you have anything additional at this time?
Well, can anybody clarify the property that's just to the south of this? Well, yeah, I currently own that property.
You own that?
Yes, sir.
And is that buildable or...
Maybe one day. God's on my side.
Well, there was a Holiday Express proposed there in nineteen-nineties that did not get approved.
So when they redid the road back, was it twenty years ago when they shaved down M-fifteen, they ran all the drainage pipes down into that property south of me there. So one thing that I've been working on, the next step of developing that corner would be dealing with the DEQ and Eagle with the wetland stuff that we got going on there that was created by the state of Michigan when they redid that road on M-fifteen there, so... So, but I own all seven acres that surround me there, right up to Mr. Bayless's office where his sign is actually as well.
All of the drainage for M fifteen, I seventy-five interchange goes in Little Walter's Lake.
Filtered down through the south end of the property.
Yeah, not through here.
But they have three twenty-inch PVC pipes that poke out into the property line going, running along south of that sign to the exit, the freeway exit, the corner there. So there's the big one on the corner and then there's two, there's one actually right behind that sign as well, but that's a totally separate issue on.
And then my next question, not necessarily directed at you, but in general, what, what was the issue related to the sign on the hotel that's on Sashabaw? That went up for discussion also, right?
The hotel received a couple of different variances. One was for height of the parapet and the signage was wall signage, not ground sign. The ground sign does conform to the ordinance. The wall signage was granted a variance for slightly larger signage for the walls. That was it on the hotel.
And can I, do I read this correct? It's possible to put up two signs on his property?
Only one, well, he can only put one ground sign up.
Only one per business or?
Oh, yeah, for his property, one per, one per piece of part property.
Parcel. There's three parcels of land that I own currently.
Yeah, if he were to put this sign on a different, you know, one of the vacant parcels that he owns, then it's an off-premise sign at that point, so he couldn't do it.
We've had that come before us too.
Yeah.
I think I'm all set. I have mixed feelings on it. I, I know you're trying to run a business and you're, and we're grateful that you're making your presentation of your storefront nice and I think that's a benefit to the community.
Brian, what's the maximum square footage that's allowable? It says here six point six square foot variance and he's got seventy point eight.
It's seventy point eight wasn't accurate by my math, so fifty square feet is what he's allowed per side.
So the existing sign is under, under, what you're saying is.
Yeah, I recalculated all the math.
So you're saying it's fifty square feet?
Fifty square feet per side.
That's allowed, but he's asking for?
He's asking for an additional six point six square feet. I, I recalculated all the math.
Per side or total?
Well, it's per, I mean, it's per side.
Okay.
So, but that's the math I came up with. Because I, I double-check. Every time a sign company gives me these numbers, they don't calculate stuff correctly.
Is it basically from where it says rec fuel and liquor, beer, wine up to the top of the sign? That's the square footage area?
No, it includes the LED.
Which is below that.
Anything from, it's basically excludes the base.
So P four would not be included?
Excluded. P two, P three times P one.
Because the bottom of your sign would only be so high above the ground.
Because the, yeah, and then P five is the overall height.
What's going to happen where that American flag sort of thing is? Is that going to, is that going to move?
No, it's not.
Oh, you can't have it.
Not by ordinance.
Yeah.
No, it's going to be, our LED ordinance only allows black background, white letters, and I think it's every three minutes.
That was just a rendering that we, that the sign company threw up there for me, but whatever the ordinance calls for is what will be on that screen.
Because we get a sign, we'll have a, you know, when that sign's installed before it's final, we'll get a certification of the calibration settings of it that it's, you know, meets our illumination standards and everything.
Well, what, what's the benefit of P three? That strip across there, what does that do?
Well, P three and P four will be one, it's one piece that will advertise local companies such as Cook's Farm Dairy, Downey's Chips, stuff like that, liquor, liquor, beer and wine on there.
So that's changeable then, right?
Changeable copy, yes.
You said P three and P four or just P three is?
P three and P four will be one, one piece.
So that whole thing is going to be changing?
Two.
No, the bottom's masonry.
Oh, P, yeah, I'm sorry. Bottom is masonry and then P three will be changing.
Yeah, what you're trying to market.
Yeah.
That day or for, you know, that week or whatever.
Every, what is it, every three minutes?
I believe so.
And that's what's allowed by ordinance?
Yeah, that, that size, because it can only meet a certain percentage of the actual overall sign area and that, that P three on the drawing meets, meets our LED sign standards. So that's not part of the variance.
Well, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused on this six point six square foot variance. So if you, if you, if you took P two and P three, add it together and multiply it times P one, what does that give you?
Fifty-six point six square feet.
Fifty-six point six and fifty is what's allowed.
Correct.
Okay. P three is one and a half foot times ten. So theoretically, that's fifteen square foot roughly. The area that comprises P three is roughly fifteen square feet.
Ten by, yeah, fifteen, yeah, you're right. Approximately.
When you're coming north on seventy-five and you get off exit ninety-one and you're at that stoplight and you're the first car, you can't even see that sign. So the original sign that I had was fifteen feet high that I submitted to Dave, I mean, Brian Ottman and calculations, sitting at that stoplight, looking at where you're going to be able to see that sign, three feet is the minimum to be able to even have a car be able to see that clearly. Now, you know, you, more importantly, the sign's a little larger for that high speed of traffic for customers to be able to see the prices and the advertisements.
I heard what you're saying. Are you saying though, you're, you're asking for it to be a little taller because you, you think it benefits the potential customer or you're saying it's a little taller because you're trying to get more information on the sign?
More taller for the safety of the customers that support me daily.
Well, yeah, and, and as I said earlier, the neighbor to the north, kind of along the lines of what you're saying, two of those reasons are why we granted it for him. Just the, the third reason was, you know, they had some proximity to the utility box issues to be able to get it up over and above the utility boxes. I mean, when you look at it, it's.
There was a lot of utility boxes, right, at his property, which would be.
So he has two of the three same condition, in my opinion. I mean, it's, where are these measurements taken from? You talked about putting limestone boulders around the bottom and putting soil in there and, and planted pots. I mean, you know, I don't know if I'm overstepping here, but.
I believe it's a ten-foot surrounding arc, so you know, you talk about people building up signs. The hotel did that, but you have to measure, I believe it's fifteen feet, an arc around and they can't exceed a certain slope, you know, to prevent somebody from just building a big hill.
Yeah.
You know, a big pile of dirt and putting the sign on it.
Yeah. I see. Is one or the other more important to you in your opinion, the, the size or the height?
I, I, in my opinion, both of them kind of go together with what's going on here.
Yeah. And is the, I forget the exact ordinance, is the fifteen square foot max percentage changeable copy?
It's twenty-five percent, I believe, for him.
Twenty-five percent.
For his sign district, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
You can only have a certain percentage that's LED changeable copy and he fits that requirement.
And that was something that him and I had discussed because the original plans had a little larger footprint.
Any more comments, questions? Idea on a motion?
Public.
Oh, I didn't do public yet. Anybody here in the public that wish to comment on this case? Seeing none? Back to the board. Well, I guess I'll formulate a motion and see if it goes anywhere. Case number twenty-two dash zero one five, Grant Bahari, petitioner requesting two total variances. I motion that we grant, in the first request, a two-foot height variance and on the second request, a five-square-foot variance, both from section twelve point oh four B, table twelve point oh four B dash one, in order to construct a new ground sign on Ortonville Road. Stating that the sign must be in the exact same location as the previous sign, which I believe is required. And that the sign mostly represents graphically what the petitioner has presented. That's it.
No second.
Uh, we have a motion by Gally, second by Charles. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gally.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Zurich.
Yes.
Mr. Auger.
No.
Okay, if you followed that, I, your motion was approved, but I narrowed it a little bit. Instead of three feet, gave you two and instead of six point six feet additional on each side, five feet additional on each side. So you just have to alter it slightly from your plan and then you can build your sign.
So my rebuttal to that, the reasoning, we picked the sizes that we have up there is to fit the dollars because now you're going to have to customize certain things and now the cost of all that's going to be a little more expensive because those are already retrofitted and made that size.
You're talking about the, the, the actual LED for the dollar amounts, the numeric numbers that display?
No, not those, the, you, so basically you granted me one foot shorter.
Yes.
And one point six square feet smaller on each side. Is that what I understood?
Yeah, correct. So I, and, I mean, this is a little atypical, but P four can just be a foot shorter.
Okay, I, I, I see what you're saying.
Um, now, you, your discussion about the, the other, you know, where it says liquor, beer, wine, rec fuel, you know, that could, you know, I don't, I don't get, I guess I don't know how to redesign the sign, but can't reopen a motion, can we? Nope.
You got your approval, so Aver will figure it out.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, third case, case number twenty-two dash zero one six. Heather Henneka, I believe, petitioner requesting three total variances. First one, a three point one six three square foot lot area variance for parcel A. Two, a two hundred and twenty-seven point seven nine foot lot width variance for parcel A. And three, a three point zero zero five square foot lot area variance from parcel B, all from section four point one eight D, table four point one eight, in order to create a lot split at five five two nine and five five four one Sashabaw Road.
Am I good to go?
You're not Heather.
I'm not Heather, that's for sure.
Name and address?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Mitchell Harvey with Stonefield Engineering and Design. Our business address is six oh seven Shelby Street, Detroit, Michigan. I'm here representing the applicant and we are requesting approval of the three variances mentioned for the lot split at five five four one Sashabaw Road. Just quickly to go over the, the variances, we would essentially be creating two lots, lot A and lot B. Lot A is the northern lot, lot B is the southern lot. So the first variance is for lot, lot area. Five feet is required. We are proposing one point three eight seven acres. Lot width is the second variance that is also for lot A. Four hundred feet is required. We are proposing one point, or one hundred and seventy-two feet total. And then the final variance request is also for lot area and that is the southern lot, which is lot B. So when looking at this, you know, we originally thought this was already going to be two separate lots because you have two separate buildings. You have a CVS and a Chase Bank and really CVS is not in the landlord business. They're not a landlord, you know, they don't have that infrastructure set up. So, you know, we kind of found it, found it unique that there were two businesses that were on the same lot. So as it sits, you know, five acres is what is required within this district. You know, the total lot right now is three point three eight acres. So any redevelopment of this lot or any change to this lot, the lot is already non-compliant. You know, and the kind of, the final thing that we looked at is, you know, does this occur in our, on our neighbors' lots with, that are within the same zone? So we took a look to the north and to the east, which is also that C two zone within the Sashabaw overlay corridor and I thought, we found that this is not a unique lot that we'd be creating here. So to the north, Ace Hardware, their lot width is a hundred and fifty-eight feet. Their lot area is one point five acres. Continuing north to the Jimmy John's, their lot width is a hundred and twenty. Their lot acreage is one point one five. And then if you jump across Sashabaw to the Wendy's and then there's a multi-tenant Plaza there at the hard corner, you know, the Wendy's is just under an acre and they actually have sixty foot, feet of lot frontage along Sashabaw Road. The multi-tenant Plaza, it's a corner lot, so it has a little bit more, but it's still under that four hundred foot threshold at three hundred and ten feet of total lot width, with the area being point six acres. So again, what we found, you know, that it appears the neighboring lots have very similar lot areas and so what we are requesting tonight of the northern lot being one point three and the southern lot being just under two at one point nine nine, we believe this will not have any detrimental impact to the surrounding area. This lot will be consistent with what is going around, going on in the Sashabaw corridor within the C two zone and for those reasons, we believe the requested variances meet the requirements for approval outlined within section fourteen point four, section E there. So with that being said, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration in this matter and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I have a, a few questions. Okay, uh, thanks. Yeah, I have a, a few questions. I mean, the, the last line as it's advertised, I mean, it says, you know, planned shopping centers, are any redevelopment planned?
So, right now, no. I, I think Chase wants to stay there for the immediate future. You know, they, if, if Chase were to move, it would be moved to a bigger space, and then, you know, that would open up the spot for, um, you know, some sort of natural, na, national tenant. But right now, there's no plan to redevelop this.
Just 'cause it, I mean, the way I'm looking at this, let's say you or the owner has a tenant interested in taking over one of these structures, but they wanna buy it out and they want their own property. You know, I think that starts at the planning commission with a site plan. And they say, okay, yeah, we kind of like this, it fits, go get your variance at the ZBA. So nothing has generated that, so I, you know, I was just, I've never, you know, it's kind of, in my mind, it's a cart before the horse kind of thing, because we're, we're taking non-conformity, creating a larger non-conformity, and then hoping something fits that box at a future date. And, you know, I don't know if you can unpack that for me, the way I'm looking at it, and...
Yeah, and, you know, the, the, the people looking to buy it, Heather's group, they are developer, and, you know, they do a lot of developments across the country. With this site, it's a little different and unique. We originally wanted to develop it, but Chase wanted to stay there. So Chase wants to stay there for the immediate future. I don't know, is it two years, is it ten years? I, I don't have that answer. And so we put together some rough concepts on, you know, what could go here if Chase moved. Nothing is firm, we haven't spoken to any tenants, we don't have any idea of what would go here. But at this time, CVS is looking to sell this property. Heather and the All rig team are very eager to be on the Sashaba corridor. It's a, a, a very valuable pe, piece of property. And so that's the reason for the request, so they can purchase the process, property from CVS, because CVS frankly wants to get rid of it and not have Chase Bank as a tenant. And then All Rig would be the landlord for Chase Bank for the immediate future, until Chase wants to move, or, you know, they go somewhere else.
Would CVS stay?
CVS would stay, it would be untouched. I believe all the setbacks, uh, we are still in compliance with, in, with this new setback.
Unless I was mistaken, I think these buildings were here before the only, our, the zoning ordinance was changed, correct?
Uh, the building, this site was developed in two thousand and five. However, all the parcels were there that predate our ordinance, and they all received variances with the widening of Sashaba Road, almost all of them.
Well, yeah, and the, and the petitioner did a good job of referencing other similar parcels in the area, correct? And, but they were platted, some of them. I mean, McDonald's has been there for thirty years.
Yeah, when Sashaba Road was widened, there was an exercise done, um, by Carlisle Wardman that, uh, went through the entire corridor and sought variances. Most of them were on signs, but, uh, you know, this parcel never received any variances that I could find in the past. I, I re, looked at the review that was done for this, uh, which doesn't even reference any issues with area or width, which was interesting. So, um, uh, but, but this parcel's existed for a long time. I think you're right, Jim. The only one that's really new is the Regency Center up there, which has become a commercial condominium.
And those were platted out lots on the front of it, in the condo association?
Yeah, they're, they're condos.
Pad sites or whatever.
Yeah.
Back years ago, this was a grocery store site, and then Mount Zion bought it and turned it into a recreational
That's right.
facility, and then it was, uh, taken over.
Right, but that's, well, it was also connected to the Ace Hardware, right? Wasn't that all one building?
No.
No, separate.
Ace was separate?
Yeah.
Had the same stone face, though, or the same?
So right now, Heather's group owns both buildings?
No, CVS owns both buildings.
CVS owns both buildings.
Correct.
And you're saying-
The only way you could, you know, you can, you could split one building off is you have to get some kind of a variance, because right now you have two buildings on one piece of property.
Exactly, and that's why we're trying to split the lot in order to sell the prop, sell that northern piece, while CVS would maintain ownership of the southern piece.
And the bank, the bank is gonna own, own that?
I'm not saying we would sell it, CVS would sell it to us, me being representative from the Heather's group.
I think Mr. Gally had a point, Jim, before, that this should go to the planning commission, because you've got all the cross-connecting driveways. Where's all the legal work to present to us to show that these driveways are all gonna stay in the future? Off of Maybe Road, all the way over to the, uh, well, far, Jimmy John's way over. They got crossed in the front, they got crossed in the back.
The whole mess of easements.
I got the declaration of easements over both the properties. It does discuss cross-access, cross-drainage, cross utilities. And at this time, we haven't proposed any redevelopment of the site. So I under, as, as I understand it, as soon as we redevelop the site, we would have to go to planning commission anyways.
Yeah, one-hundred percent.
And then at that point, you know, we would have, we'd be bound within the, the, the property lines that we are creating and the setbacks associated with it. And it would be our responsibility to design the site to accommodate whatever we're developing, and, you know.
I'd like-
So a zoning change or a sale wouldn't erase the easement accesses, those are recorded to the deed.
Yeah, they're recorded.
So, you know, obviously, if it did get redeveloped, we'd have to have similar access.
So the corner property would be, the corner property would be protected then for access?
Yeah, the, part of the Sashaba overlay district too, is the cross-access, the drainage issues. All of that's handled through the overlay district standards and the Sashaba drain. All of these properties are.
So, so the, the corner property will, it's impossible for the corner property, they only have one entrance? Right now it has two.
Right now it has two.
Is it, is it possible that they're forced to have one?
Well, wouldn't they have an access, an easement over that Boulevard entrance?
Yeah, they have an easement.
Yeah, there's an easement over-
Yeah, so they, they have two exits.
So they will, in theory, they'll always have two of them.
Yeah, they, as long as they control that ea, that easement.
Well, they'll have three, because from eight, the hardware store crosses and comes in, so, and there's an-
To the bank site.
Yeah, and it's a-
Yeah, when I go to that hardware store, I come off of Maybe Road behind both buildings.
Yeah.
All safe.
And but that's, that's the reason why the Sashaba overlay district is there, to allow for passage from one site to another site without going out on the road.
Yeah, just to reiterate, we plan on keeping that, you know, we're not touching the site. We're keeping the site exactly as it is, it'll just be, you know, facilitated.
I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking the future. You, you're doing this to get ready for what's happening next.
And I mean, frankly, as a developer, you know, more access is better, so we, but, you know, we have the easements that would keep them open, but, you know, if you're talking about that Chase Bank parcel, having that curb cut on Maybe, so people can get to our site easier, is, you know, a benefit to everybody.
So just going through a further scenario. If CVS tells the owner, hey, we want out, and then the owner comes into us, we wanna tear that building down, it's, something's wrong with it, we wanna build a new building. It goes to the planning commission, they build a new building if we approve it. That happens regardless of whether the lot's split or the lot's not split.
Doesn't matter.
The only re, the only scenario where the split negatively impacts the owner is if they wanna dig both buildings up and put one long linear building there, but then they just recombine them.
Yep, yeah, they could.
Does parking for each site conform?
Yes.
I mean, just, you know, my initial thoughts were, you know, cart before the horse, but the more I think about it, the cart and the horse can't move without going to step one, regardless of what we do with the split.
Yeah, no matter what you do, the parcel lines will be there if you allow this to be split. And, you know, if they come in to redevelop the Chase, they're gonna be at the planning commission. If CVS decides to leave for whatever reason, which they usually never do, but in case they happen to, they're gonna be in front of the planning commission with a new proposal.
And if it remains one lot and they wanna do either or to the one building, si, same scenario, yeah, okay.
So in this zoning district right now, four-hundred feet is the minimum frontage?
Yeah, yeah, and if you have, if you have, uh-
How many four-hundred-foot parcels are on it, Dixie Avenue, or on, or on it, Sashaba?
I couldn't find many.
I don't think there's very many.
No, there isn't, and, and five acres is another problem.
Yeah, right.
Pretty much, I remember when Regency was developed, uh, that, that was pretty much the only one that conformed to everything.
Yeah, right.
You know, in the district, I, I mean, because I did the review for it. So, and similar with this parcel, this essentially is a non-conforming lot of record. That's how it got through the planning commission without even having an issue.
Well, I think it would benefit the township if these buildings were on separate properties, for tax purposes.
I don't know about that. I, I certainly am happy that we have easements recorded. And truthfully, I think if you were to approve this, um, that should be a condition of approval, that the township at least has, you know, the documents.
Maintains the easements.
Well, not necessarily maintains them, but has the actual documents, and they can just email it to me.
Absolutely.
You know, so we have record of it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because when I look through the planning commission files, there's no easements anywhere, so it'd be good that we have those.
Anything additional, Mr. Zurick?
No, I think it's, sounds like it's a safe path.
My only thought too was, uh, if somebody, if they, they sold after they bought, and somebody wanted to redevelop it and make it one site, which we talked, I think have to come back to the planning commission and probably join the two properties back together. And it's in the overlay district.
And they'd have to get rid of a few easements.
Yeah, my main concern when I first saw this was all these crossovers that are there. And, uh, so with that covered with legal documents, I, I don't see a problem myself.
Yeah, and it should, the condition be that the easements are received and reviewed by township personnel or council to make sure they're valid?
I don't think they have to even be reviewed. I mean, if they're recorded in county, they're there, you know, I mean, I would accept that.
Have you seen these documents, Chris?
No, no, that's what I was saying, I looked through the whole planning commission file, because we have it all scanned in, um, from two thousand and five.
So did you see these documents and review them before we take action, postpone it for a month?
No, I don't think that's necessary. I, I mean, he's got a whole-
So, yeah, if, if I could just make a suggestion, I have all the easements here. I'd happy, I'd be happy to have them review them, and any other additional easements that are necessary, we'll be happy to provide. So, if I could make a friendly suggestion to the motion, is any easements to satisfy the, you know, township planner, um, regarding cross-access?
Yeah, makes sense to me, just review and request and receive and review.
Yeah, we'll provide, you know, this was when it was one lot, there was cross-access over it, so it may have to have some verbiage change, but, you know, the easements are in place as, as of now.
Well, if either one of these two are gonna, you know, go through this, they're gonna require an altar survey, which is gonna show all those easements.
Correct, yeah.
I'll note that the petitioner offered to, uh-
You're good with these motions, go ahead, Brian.
Well, what we can do, certainly, what we can do is, um, uh, we can have our township engineer review the actual, you know, when they're revised, you know, and the sale goes through, that may be provided to the township for our review of the planning department. And I'll have our engineer, uh, review it and vet it. You know, and then you'll be responsible for whatever review fees, so.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of twenty-two dash sixteen, petitioner requesting three total va, variances, I recommend that we grant the three variances as-
Wait, we haven't, we haven't done public comment.
Oh, pardon me, yeah. Anybody in the audience wishes to comment on this case? Name and address, and, sorry about that, skipped us out.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Alshig, this is Zaid Alshig. We, um, own Pineapple Wine Shop at five-seven-two-six Maybe Road, also Pineapple Plaza, which is across the street from the site, their, uh, the Chase building. I've been at Pineapple Wine Shop for seventeen years. We've been taxpayers, and we've been there, we've done tremendous work for the city, for Pineapple Wine Shop and the shopping center next door to it. First of all, the, a case like this, I don't really have a prob, the main problem I have, the corner's already super, super busy. The Chase will be, end up, if they split the property, they're gonna end up knocking it down and rebuild, uh, sm, mini shopping center. I was told by my, uh, my, uh, sales agent, that they're putting a Chipotle there. We also own the Taco Vita across the street from it, and that would be like not fair to us. It'll be directly across the street from us. We opened during COVID, uh, the Taco Vita, and we struggled. It was very difficult to where we are today. And we made it, and we, we made it happen. We make the shopping center looks, we do all the maintenance, we make it look beautiful every, every year, from silk coating to the landscape. So that's why we're here to, um, to propose against, uh, the new development they wanna do. They are gonna end up re-knocking it down and put a mini center there, with probably a drive-through, Brian, what's on me? And, uh-
And most of you are familiar with the area, the, the area is extremely busy, there's accidents on a daily basis. And now, that's not gonna, I mean, you need more exits, and now, they're gonna close it up. The traffic is crazy, there's, like, there's at least one or two accidents a week. You guys know that already. We have no problems with Chipotle, but it, we just feel like, my brother was saying, it's unfair, and we've been part of the community, and the area needs to calm down a little bit, there's too much going on there. There's construction all the time, there's accidents, there's kids walking all over, there's a school down the road. There's two schools, actually, the middle school and the one over there. And, and in our opinion, needs to calm down a little bit, and this is gonna make it a little more cha, chaos. Bring more chaos to the city.
We don't have a problem with Chipotle coming to Clarkston, I know they would be a good, uh, business there. However, not directly across the str, street from us, they will crush us, that's not fair to us either.
And if they, a lot to open parking lots, I mean, eventually, everyone's gonna come up to you guys and say, hey, we're gonna buy next door, we're gonna open it too. It's gonna start a trend of, 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 like, that as well, totally taken.
Well, also to Mr. Rially's point, and why hasn't there, you have a developer involved? Shouldn't we see something as part of the community, it's a very, it's a nice corner? Shouldn't be something be presented of what is gonna happen? I mean, these are, I'm sure we can look it up with a private owner, someone is gonna sell, someone is gonna develop something. But shouldn't there be a discussion before variances are granted? That, hey, what is actually gonna happen in this corner? I mean, wouldn't you guys wanna protect that too, really see, hey, how is this gonna look? This is a great intersection, when you walk in, it's a great strip, great corridor. But there should be something for us to put our eyes on and look at, and, you know, we don't have control of what the private landlords, who's gonna sell and do that, but we should have some, you know, say in what it's gonna look like, and what it's gonna be developed into. I mean, that's just, I mean, that's what you guys are here for, that's what I think. It shouldn't just be, yeah, let's go through and do the variances, when they have, presented anyway.
We're not, we're not here for that.
Yeah, th, thanks for your comments, guys, and can all three of you please sign in too, so we make sure we get all your names since you all spoke?
Yeah, yeah.
I just didn't, you were on a roll, I didn't wanna cut you off. Brian, comment?
Just for the record, there's been no conversation about a Chipotle in this township. So, that may have been what you heard, but the first person they go through in our township is the planning department, and they have not even had any, we've had zero conversation about this Chase Bank. Zero. And Chipotle, which I've worked with in the past, on, in other communities, they're way far out in front of us. So, there, there's multiple sites that they, they could not have to go through this hassle of splitting a property, going to the ZBA, if they wanted to put a Chipotle in. There's multiple sites, even on this map, that they could put it in like that. could put it in like that. It's a greenfield. You know, there's a vacant lot next to Tim Hortons, so. But point is, is that there's been zero conversation with Chipotle in this township. So.
And to piggyback Mr. Otman's con- comments.
I mean, I hope that, you know, I-
Yeah, no, that's fine, but what about seeing something in terms of anything from the developer? Of like, well, this is why we want free variances.
Well, but the, a developer has, or anybody, has the right to buy a piece of property and speculate.
But we have a right to come and comment and advocate that.
And that, that stage would be the planning commission.
Yeah, and that's-
If they come in and do a Chipotle and at the Chase Bank.
Or whatever it is, doesn't matter. But what is that?
Yeah, you'll, you'll be notified, because everything is a special land use in the Overlay District. So you will be notified, just like you work for this, and you'll have the right to come and speak for or against it. Um, that's your right. So you will be notified if anything ever goes to the planning commission on this, those, any of those sites.
So, yeah, and to add to that, either one of those parcels remodels, redevelops, tears down, they have to go to the planning commission. I sit on the planning commission as well. I sit on both. Safety is the primary concern of any redevelopment. So a lot that that narrow and that small, traffic flow, like you had stated, how big the parking has to be to handle the use. So the higher the use is, the higher volume, the more parking, the more safety. So that, that is primary on anything that comes to the planning commission. So nothing will be touched on this property, other than we're drawing a line between them. And then the planning commission, which has seven members, is the body where you would come and speak, this is too much, we'd like to see this. So you, you would get notification, and you would come to that. One hundred percent.
Be the same situation as when you came before this board on your modernization project. You came before this board to request variances. That's what we're here for. We're not planning commission.
Thanks, guys. Please sign in.
Please go ahead, Mr. Sherrill.
Mr. Chairman, in the case, in the subject of the case twenty-two dash zero one six, I move that we grant the three total va- variances as published. I'm not going to repeat them. But we grant those variances, and we also, um, require the township to investigate and, uh, take a look at the easements that encumber both of these properties for cross-access, and if there are potentially any other drainage easements.
I'll support that.
Uh, motion by Charles, support by Augur. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Zurich?
Yes.
Mr. Augur?
Yes.
And Mr. Galley.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Uh, item H, approval of minutes, uh, regular meeting minutes, June first, two thousand and twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, just a second.
Pardon me.
Just a second.
Sure, thanks.
Uh, I have a comment.
Oh.
I was absent for that meeting, but when I look at this, it says, accept the agenda as presented, uh, we have roll call vote, and you have me both present and absent.
So which case is that?
Uh, oh, it's-
It's in the call to order.
It's in the call to order.
Oh, yeah, roll call.
I was absent.
Thank you for catching that.
Really kind of stood out.
That's an easy change.
It stood out to you.
Do we have a motion with Mr. Charles' change?
Um, another comment. I noticed, and maybe this happens on other cases, too, when you go down, it says the vo- the vote to support, and you have Mr. Epic as being absent, but as you look down here, he's actually voting.
Yeah, he arrived late.
So, do you make-
He came in late.
Yes.
Do you make a comment someplace in here about that?
Uh, yeah, in page two, it says, in bold, Chairman Epic arrived at six oh four. And because he was late, he just told Brian, he can just finish it.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right.
Because we already started one case.
Yeah. Good catch.
All right. With the, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted with the changes by Mr. Sherrill as presented.
I'll go ahead and support. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Uh, abstain. Mr. Charles abstains. Oppose, saying no one. Minutes are passed. Any discussion unrelated to the cases?
Um, is anything happening at the planning commission on, uh, the coffee shop on Dixie?
No.
Anything more on the gas station up at the corner?
No.
Okay.
Hasn't been re-presented.
No, there'll be one item, as far as I know, on the planning commission next week, and it has to do with, uh, an ordinance amendment for, uh, lake access.
You haven't heard about the coffee shop, whether it's just a debt issue?
I know they hired a different engineer, so they're, they're working on drawings.
Good. I hope to make our comments.
Oh, you mean the one next to, uh?
Do you like in?
Do you like in?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifteen.
I'll support. Motion to adjourn at seven fifteen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Hey, Grant?